Good evening. I'd like to call the City of West Bend Licensing Board for Monday, January 1st, 2019 to order and recognize that we do have a quorum of the licensing board tonight. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have four items on tonight's agenda, starting off with the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of the licensing board dating back to January 7th, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions, comments, or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item two is an original Class B combination liquor license for Eddie's Moonlighting LLC, Eddie's Moonlighting located at 326 Comer Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item three is approval of the operators' licenses, and the list is in our packet.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Stephanie, I've got one question. There's a couple in there for moonlighting, excuse me, for Washington House Pub. And my understanding is the Washington House Pub closed? Is there any risk or reward or reason?
They can use that license at any establishment within the city.
Perfect.
So it's just not at that premise.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item number four is an operator's license for Nicole Boylan, and we have a presentation tonight by Ken Moiler, Chief of Police. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. When Ms. Boylan last had an operator's license, she had three violations as an operator, twice for serving intoxicated persons and once for a violation of closing hour. The past, we've gone by a five-year rule for the violations. She's, one is in 2013, and the other one will be five years as of March of this year. So, close enough, I guess I would, hopefully she's learned her lesson. If she were to violate, if this is approved and she would violate, we would bring that to the council for requests to revoke it.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for the Chief? Entertain a motion on the item.
Go ahead, Steve.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. And being there, being no further business before the licensing board, I adjourn.
Thanks, Craig. I'd like to call the Finance Committee for January 21st to order. We have three items on the agenda. Item number one is the minutes of the January 7th meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion carries. Item number two is the 2019 through 2021 collective bargaining agreement between the City of West Bend and the West Bend Police Protective Association. Michelle, did you want to talk about anything? Michelle, the Director of Human Resources.
Good evening. As you have in front of you or before you, the agreement, major changes, where the wage increases, increase in clothing allowance. Same time has taken away the retiree health insurance, so putting that in place of, as well as a 3% across the board for the three years. Do you have any questions?
Thanks, Michelle. Any comments or questions for Michelle? I guess I would add that I thought the negotiations went very well. Thankful to the Police Department, the association for their help and as we went through some of these issues. And thanks to you, Michelle and Jay, for working through that as well.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion carries. Item number three is the compensation schedule for public works, park, and utility. Again, Michelle, Director of Human Resources.
So we're having difficulties with recruiting in our public works, utility, and parks. Our entry wage for that area is really low. It's at $1,850. We're looking at increasing it to $21 dollars per hour, which is still lower than a number of the municipalities that are around us, but it's in line with them. So we're requesting that we increase our starting or entry wage. That's what's before you tonight.
Any comments or questions? Yes, John?
Yeah. I'm glad that we're starting to step forward and starting to get the pay up there where it should be because knowing these gentlemen, that they're basically working 24 hours a day. They can probably have something set up for Christmas program or something, and they can't go because all of a sudden Mother Nature changes their schedule. And by that reason, I think they should be paid for what they're doing. And plus the fact that we don't have to be a training officer or training classroom form, and then they jump to a different community where they don't have to do that. So I'm glad, I'll make a motion to approve this.
A second.
Have a motion and a second, Craig. I know you had a comment.
Just real quick, thanks to staff echoing John's comments a little bit, but staff put together a very nice, I guess, comparison sheet showing, there had to be a couple of dozen different communities on there where we rank. Also, thanks to staff, looks like you did some good exit interviews to find out when folks are leaving, why they were leaving, where they were going. Some folks did go to the private sector, but significant number were leaving to other communities. So I think you're spot on, John. We were a training ground for some folks getting a year or two years worth of experience and then jumping ship to local communities for an extra couple bucks. And anybody that's outside these walls in the private sector, certainly in the public sector, is seeing the pressure on employment. Finding high-quality, good employees really is becoming a commodity. So I do think we're doing the right thing by stepping up to the plate here a bit. So good work to staff.
Would agree. Yes, Chris?
I don't want to open Pandora's box or anything, but do you feel that there are other departments that maybe we should do a similar investigation into?
Yes.
Okay. I'll leave it at that. You can share later.
Yes.
Any other comments or questions? If not, I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion carries. Thanks, Michelle. Being no further business before the Finance Committee, I adjourn.
Thank you, Rich. Like to call the City of West Bend Common Council for Monday, January 21st, 2019 to order and recognize that we do have all eight aldermen here and accounted for. Good evening, gentlemen. Item number one is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting from January 7th, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions, comments, or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Items number two and three are under the consent agenda. I'd entertain a motion for both of those.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item number four is operator's license for Nicole Boylan.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries. Item number five is a discussion on amending Section 9.07 and creating Section 9.075 and 12.175 of the municipal code regarding keeping of chickens in the city.
This is just the second reading of what was voted on last meeting. Because it wasn't unanimous, the ordinance had to come back for a second reading.
So it's a process to take a regular motion, just like we normally would?
Yep. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions or comments anyone has? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Aye.
Could you please do a roll call vote? And aye means you're in favor of chickens.
Alderman Butchlick?
No.
Alderman Christian?
Yes.
Alderman Chevalier?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman Caston?
No.
Alderman Hugaster?
No.
Alderman Maddle?
Yes.
Alderman Kist?
No.
And it is tied.
I'll editorialize just a little bit before rendering my vote. Again, reminding the folks that this is the third topic I've had to vote on in eight years. I did receive some comments, some questions, a couple of concerns over the last two weeks. My personal tally, I know each of us has a different number of folks that have reached out. My personal tally in either emails, phone calls, or face-to-face interaction is seven to six in favor of chickens. I did also have a chance to speak to a group of about 30 folks the week before last. I would say maybe 20 of them were constituents. I asked each of them to raise their hands if they were sick of the chicken topic, and all 20 hands went up. I then asked if, I asked them to leave their hands up if they had a burning desire one way or another, and every single hand went down. So I suspect this is kind of a personal choice with folks. Again, I wasn't seeing a great sway one way or another, and due to that, I will maintain my yes vote. And Jay, could you touch on process? What happens here? How does someone go about acquiring chickens legally?
So the ordinance gets published, and Stephanie's office takes care of that. That'll happen in the next week or so. Once that's been completed, process-wise, you can obtain, if you're interested in having chickens in the City of West Bend, you can obtain a form, which is a license, application for license, from the Treasurer's Office, from Kerry Winklebauer's department. And once you have that form, then that form will get transferred up to the Development Department. Jim Renke is here. Mark Matrovich spoke last week about the chicken ordinance. Their department will review for setbacks and other parameters that are required for the chickens. They'll include the Building Inspection Department as needed regarding the coop and setbacks and all that good stuff. There is a fee that's associated with that development review. It depends on the situation. It's either $35, $75, or both. You may or may not need a plat of survey to receive your chicken license permit, depending on whether the setbacks are obvious or not that you meet them. If it's a real tight area, they might require you to obtain a plat of survey, which means employing a surveyor to locate your property lines. In some cases, you already know where they are, and you can just have them exposed before the Building Inspection Department comes. And then assuming all of that is in place and that you get the stamp of approval from the Department of Development, you have the ability to take your application back down to the Finance Department and pay the $50 premise fee, and then you have the ability to score chickens up to four.
Okay, so I guess just to let staff do the publication and get whatever coordinating is done. I'm not sure what the best time of year to get chickens is, but is it safe to say, Stephanie, give folks till February 15th maybe, and before they come into the Finance Department?
Yes, that's reasonable.
All right. Any other questions or comments? John?
Yeah, Craig, I just noticed in the paper, they hadn't mentioned that chickens were going to be $8, and I think that was a misprint. Just the publics realize that it's going to be $50 for four chickens.
$50 per year for the chicken license, plus whatever typical development fees there would be.
Which is a one-time fee.
Got it. Anybody else? Okay, moving along to item number six, the 2019 through 2021 collective bargaining agreement between the City of West Bend and the West Bend Police Protective Association.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item seven is compensation schedule for public works, parks, and utility employees.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item number eight is an ordinance to amend the 2020 comprehensive plan for the City of West Bend for a change in the recommended land use for approximately 15 acres of land located at the northeast corner of University Drive and West Decor Road from multifamily use to industrial land use. And we have a presentation tonight by business and development specialist, Jim Renke. Good evening, Jim.
Good evening, everyone. There are actually two items on the agenda. One's for the comprehensive plan, and then the next one is for the permanent zoning for the same property. I'll do a brief on both of them. Back in January, the Plant Commission held a public hearing for the comprehensive plan and for the zoning amendment proposed for this property. This is actually the Johann lands located on the north side of Decor Road. They're requesting a change in the land use from multifamily to industrial. They have plans to develop the property with a repair shop and a service building for the business that they own there, and then also future expansion for some mini warehousing. Staff went through and reviewed the request. Given the land, the topography, the, you know, the potential of what was buried there, the request seems reasonable to change that land use from the multifamily to the industrial use, given the separations that they have. So before you tonight is a resolution changing that recommended land use, and then also an ordinance changing the zoning from the temporary use from when it was out in the township to the permanent zoning of M1 light industrial for that warehousing use.
Thank you, Jim. Plant Commission also looked at this just as a pure concept review, I think it was, right?
Correct. There was a concept that was, you know, accompanying it. That's why it was in your packet also. So the large building, the 100 by 100, was actually the repair shop and the actual business portion that they would use for the part of the quarry and also the business that they operate. And then the other smaller buildings would be cold storage buildings.
And I think the general thought on the Plant Commission, assuming that they'd go through the normal architectural review, but where this would be located is pretty, I don't want to say it's invisible, but pretty difficult to see. You know, the Plant Commission at least, conceptually didn't have any issues with the change as well.
Correct.
Okay, so item number eight is the ordinance to amend the 2020 comp plan. We'd entertain a motion on that item.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. And the sister item is item number nine, ordinance to permanently zone approximately 15 acres of land located at the northeast corner of University Drive and West Decor Road from temporary to M1 light industrial district.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Jim. Have a good night. Item number 10 is update regarding the Carl Coast Baseball Field of Ragnar Park, and we have a presentation today by Park Rec and Forestry Director Craig Hepner. Good evening, Craig.
Good evening. There was a fantastic review in the Daily News from Saturday, so any questions? All right, just kidding. It was very well done. The last, I want to give some updates, make sure you get some facts, and kind of give you the timeline going forward with the baseball project. Last Friday, the West Bend Baseball Association represented from the Cal Ripken Senior Foundation and the city met, and we went through a number of things from design to especially funding. So I'll talk about some of those topics. During the last couple of months, there's been a lot of work behind the scenes. So design has been going on and plans for the field. There's a lot to it. There's a company called Fields, that's their actual name, Fields. They will be doing the construction eventually. They're currently doing the design, with also some local companies helping out with surveying, geotech work, and stormwater management and planning. So all those companies are working on that behind the scenes. We've received within the last week or so what they call 90% plans. I always say that's about 50% time, but, so we've made some changes, some discussions, and we'll be working with them on those. We're also working on refining the budget. You know, the budget we currently have sits at about $1.4 million, and that's for the field, the fencing, and dugouts. So that's what I'll call Phase One. There's also a Phase Two, which includes lighting and concession stand and grandstand. So there's two big components to it. The most important one for everybody is to get the field in. So that's what we're working on first. So the 1.4 number is out there, but there's about five different sections on a budget that we're looking at refining. There's been some talk about some local companies donating some work. There's some things I think we need to dig into to make sure I think we can cover or cut some costs on that. So the whole group is hoping that that budget does come down a bit. As far as funding, they have made a great start. As you know, West Bend Mutual is a big supporter of this project, and they are donating $500,000 towards it. As you also know, the city and the school district are also into this, and the Cal Ripken Senior Foundation. So they have right now about 60% of the funding for Phase One complete. They're working hard at doing some fundraising, talking to local foundations, businesses, et cetera. A lot of our discussion was working with the Cal Ripken Foundation. So they have committed so far $100,000, and they would like to get up towards $500,000 or more. So the way we've kind of split this up is the local group, the West Bend Baseball Association and their friends, are doing the local contacts as far as funding and fundraising. And the Cal Ripken Foundation would be more on the regional and national level. They have some contacts and some good possibilities for grants through Major League Baseball and some other ideas. So they're definitely a part of the team. They're going to be moving forward on that. So it really depends on how long that takes to obtain. The hope for the group is that we can begin construction in early spring, weather-dependent, and I'll say funding-dependent. In our meeting, it was pretty clear that to start the project, the field project, that all the funding for that part of it needs to be in. So if we're at 60% now, it doesn't mean we can start and float alone. So if we're at 60% now, it doesn't mean we can start and float alone for the rest of it. Ripken Foundation, I'm sure the city would not want to be in that position. They've gotten burned a few times by actual cities. I said, "Yeah, yeah, we're good for it," and then they started the project and they didn't have the funding. So they want to make sure that all the funding is there upfront. So we have another meeting set up for two weeks, or in February 1st, to kind of get an update on fundraising locally, nationally, some more of the design and the budget refinement. So I think things are moving along at the right pace. Another thing I should mention, once construction begins, it does take about 100 days for the project to get constructed. So a little over three months, three and a half months. So whether it starts March 1st, April 1st, July 1st, or August 1st, it's about 100 days from that time. So that's a quick update, but I think, again, good progress. The team is working hard. I think we had a really good discussions. Jay was in and on the meeting. Feel free to add any, the mayor was there as well, so feel free to add anything that I may have missed. Happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Questions, anybody? Mike?
Hey Craig, is there a contingency in place for what typically hosts, or what events are typically hosted at that field over the summer? I mean, that's going to take up most of the, of that baseball season.
Right. The first one is the high school season, so that's, this year starting in spring, and that's about April 1st. So that would not be, if we start construction in March or April, that would not be able to happen. Another target they were looking at is the Little League Tournament, which happens Father's Day weekend in June. Again, that's kind of pushing it, depending on how we get with the weather, but it's possibility. There's also the different senior league games. So they're making contingencies right now, both at the school district and then these adult leagues and as far as those. So yes, that's, that's high on the radar. That's part of our discussion, do we want to start March 1st, April 1st, and get it done by midsummer? And then have some games? Or do we want to push it off till August 1st, let's say, and get most of the season in, and then do more fall construction? So right now, the push is for the early spring, just to keep things moving, but I think that's also on a radar, it's a possibility, especially depending if funding comes in quickly or not. Good question.
The school district has been notified also, they're aware of it. I left, I think with maybe, did I make half the meeting? Maybe a little more than half?
You did well.
I'm glad to hear that there was consensus that we won't start any demo work, we won't start pulling the field apart until we have 100% of Phase 1 firmly in place. I think that's an important key for all of us to know as well.
It's important, because if they decide, hey, you know what, let's not start April 1st, we need a few more months for grants to come in, or whatever the reason, then we would have a baseball diamond to play again and take care of some of those contingencies. So we're waiting till that kind of go moment when everybody's, the budget's perfect and the funding's there to match.
Anybody else? Thanks for that update, Craig, appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Item number 11, a report by Alderman Christian regarding the downtown bid board meeting.
Thanks Mayor. The bid board met on January 8th. First order of business for us was election of officials for the, for the calendar year. We did elect Mike Husar, President, again, of the downtown bid board. He's the returning president. New President-elect Tony Jason was elected, and then our secretary is now Wayne Kynes. So a few new faces in there, but the new officials have been set here for the year. We were presented, Adam Gitter, the development, City Development Coordinator, made a presentation on the Commons Group that we hosted a few months back, and they were the brainstorming college kids who came in one day, kind of a one-day project to help us with some ideas for the downtown associ, or the downtown area. The bid board kind of decided to form a task force amongst members of the bid board and partnering with the Downtown Association to take some of these ideas that were presented to us and really develop some recommendations for how to possibly move forward on some of those thoughts. So we're looking forward to, you know, hearing what could come up out of these concepts and these ideas. Also, we were presented with some advertising and marketing ideas for the downtown area that we partnered with Moraine Park Technical College to accomplish, and this was some students in their, in their programs there, just to help develop some ideas as well for possibly logos or, you know, color schemes, design concepts, to help brand the downtown area a little bit more, and just keep it all, you know, orderly and nice. So along with that, then, also we've been talking about wayfinding signage, you know, just different signs pointing out where public parking access is, where some highlighted features are for the downtown area to help visitors really maneuver through the area and make it, make their experience really enjoyable. So that information was referred to the Transportation Committee for further evaluation as well. And then we had been considering an app, like on your cellphones, an app for the downtown area. It's one of those ideas that, you know, seems like, oh, well, it's a good idea, everybody's doing it. But when we start talking about it, we had a hard time figuring out how it could be most beneficial for us at this time. So we're still trying to develop that idea and that concept, and if that is something that we're seriously interested in. There is some monetary, you know, expense included with something like that, so, you know, trying to find the right partners to develop this and make sure that it does exactly what we want it to before we decide that this is the direction that we want to go. So just kind of a conversation about that. But it's, it's one thing that we have been considering, so just a kind of a good conversation about that. And that was it.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions for Mike? I've got one easy one. You mentioned Tony Jason, you said President-elect. Is that, does that mean that he's?
Vice President.
Oh, Vice President.
If I misspoke.
Gotcha. I may have heard, I just, okay, that would have been new from the, for the organization.
Yeah. Mike Husar is the remaining, is the President again.
And item number 12, a report by Alderman Jenkins regarding the Library Board meeting.
All right. There are two big highlights. One, we had a representative from Friends of Sculpture approach us about placing a sculpture in Patriots Park. We didn't get a clear look at it, but from what we saw in the pictures, it's, it's a poet kind of hunched over, looking at this big kind of canvas, maybe four feet wide, but pretty tall, about 10 or so feet tall. The questions we had were about location, where would it fit within Patriots Park? So they, we asked them to come back with us with some more visuals, maps, to kind of see if it's really going to be a good touch and fit for our park. There wouldn't be a cost to the library or to the city to have it, so it'd be a nice perk to acquire it. But again, it has to be a right fit for the park and the use for the library. The other item we discussed also regards to Patriots Park was grounds maintenance. So back when Patriots Park was first created, and I was President of the Library Board at the time, we had done a partnership with Delta Defense to maintain the grounds. They helped maintain it for about three or four years until they moved out to their new location. When Epic Creative stepped in, they also stepped up to donating for grounds maintenance. They have informed us that they're no longer going to do that, so that left us with some options to consider. Amy originally approached the board about just funding options, but we said, hey, you know, let's, let's go back out into the community, see if we can get a new community partner to help us with that. So Amy and I are going to be working together with some letters to get out to the media and get out to the community to see if there's any offers out there. We're thinking the total quote donated is only about 5,000, so if any business or businesses want to help sponsor the grounds maintenance for Patriots Park, we'd be glad to have you. You get nice signage by the library, and we would appreciate the support. Thanks.
Thanks, Chris. Any questions for Chris? And being no further business before the Common Council, I adjourn. Are there any announcements tonight? Have a great evening, everyone.